To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of all of the deceased local public servants who have passed on over the last year. Any firefighter, teacher, police officer, town hall worker, any elected or appointed official or town employee. Let us pause for a moment. Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like to introduce the people who spent the last six months creating the budget that you're going to be voting on tonight and implementing a spending plan that brought us all to this evening. And as I introduce you, feel free to stand, or wave, or genuflect, or whatever you want to do. Members of Clinton's Finance Committee: Ellen O'Toole, Barry Whitney, Bill McGrae, Bob Latini, Ed Powers, and Chairman Jim Tumalo. Thank you all for your service to our community. Members of the Select Board: Chairman William Conley, Vice Chair Sean Kerrigan, John Buzzno, Ed DeValt, and Mike Jakonski. Thank you all for your service to our community as well. As many of you know, Mr. Jakonski did not seek reelection this year. And I know that you join me in thanking Mike for his dedicated 15 years on the Board of Selectmen. Mike Jakonski. Also with us tonight: Michael Ward, Town Administrator; Bob Gibbons, Town Solicitor; and Julie Kilbride, Secretary for tonight's meeting. And I'm Terry Ngano, and I'll be your moderator tonight. Our world has been turned upside down for the past four months. And looking around you, I'm sure you see many changes from previous town meetings. The check-in, the seating arrangement, the quorum, the sanitizing stations. All major but temporary changes to town meeting. We even have a dismissal plan for you tonight. All of you on this side will go out this back door in the corner, out to Walnut Street. All of you on this side will go straight out the door and exit out to Church Street. And the balcony, with so few people, I guess can jump over the side railings or whatever they want to do when the time is right. With all the new rules, however, the rules for the meeting itself remain the same as John Hogan set for you for the past 30 years or so. And let me remind you of those rules right now. All questions, comments, or discussions should be directed to me. I doubt I will know the answer, but we'll redirect your question to the appropriate person for a response. To speak tonight, raise your hand. Wait to be recognized by me, and then come forward to one of these microphones. Make sure to state your name and address before speaking. And if you wish to clean off the microphone before you speak, we have the material right here for you to do that. I guess we only have one mic. One mic. Please no personalities in your remarks. Let's keep our discussion focused on the article in question. The only votes I count will be from those seated. I cannot count the people standing. The only people in this hall should be registered voters in Clinton other than the three non-residents that I've given permission to to be here. All proposed amendments must come to me in writing. Unless I hear an objection, I will dispense with the formal reading of the warrant, as all of you should have a copy of it. And one last thing. This is my very first time doing this, so please be patient with me. All right, Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to receive the reports of the town officers.
Second. Article 1, to receive the reports. Is there any discussion on Article 1? If not, all in favor, raise your card, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Article 2.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officials of the town as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Mass. General Laws. Said salaries and compensation to be effective from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2021, and to raise and appropriate a sum of money, therefore.
Second. This is Article 2. It fixes the salaries and compensation for elected officials only. Is there any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your cards, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate from the current tax levy the sum of $45,317,989.63. And to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $776,828.37. And to appropriate and transfer the sum of $16,834. And to raise and appropriate the sum of $473,233 from the Ambulance Enterprise Fund. And to appropriate and transfer the sum of $75,977. And raise and appropriate the sum of $2,619,108 from the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. And to appropriate and transfer the sum of $9,125. And raise and appropriate the sum of $670,367 from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund. And to appropriate from the Rubbish Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of $25,000. And to appropriate and transfer the sum of $31,904. And raise and appropriate the sum of $1,198,581 from the Landfill Enterprise Fund. Said sums to be used to defray town charges from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2021, as those charges appear in the Finance Committee Report of Recommendations.
Second. All right, folks, this is your budget. And although we go through it rather quickly, you need to turn to the back of your warrant that you hopefully all have now, to the Finance Committee Budget Report and Recommendations. And much like Mr. Hogan did before me, we'll go through each one, give it a few seconds to look at. But we'll also give you time at the end if you have any questions. And stop me at any time if you want to come forward with a question. Obviously, we will follow the procedure. All right, starting with number 114, Moderator. Board of Selectmen. Finance Committee. You'll see a big jump there, by the way, and that's because the Finance Committee has put aside more emergency funds, considering the state budget, considering the COVID virus and everything else. That's the big jump. Town Accountant. Board of Assessors. Treasurer Collector. Packing Fines. Exactly the same. Town Solicitor. Next page. Town Clerk. Conservation Commission. Planning Board. Zoning Board. Montechusid Planning Commission. Economic Development. Insurance Miscellaneous. Police Department. Goes on to the next page. Fire Department. Building Inspector. Gas Plumbing Inspector. Sealer of weights and measures. Electrical Inspector. Emergency Management. Animal Control Officer. School Department. Department of Public Works. Next page. Board of Health. Council on Aging. Department of Veteran Services. Bigelow Public Library. Parks and Recreation, which goes on to the next page. Fuller Field Commission. Human Resources. Facilities and Grounds. And then the smaller departments are listed below that. On the next page are your enterprise funds. Those are bank accounts, obviously, that money is collected, and then you give the town authority to spend that money at a town meeting. The Ambulance Enterprise Fund. The Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Rubbish Enterprise Fund. And Landfill Enterprise Fund. Now we'll stop there because the rest of it is a budget summary, a summary of what we just went over. And then the last page and a half or so would be revenue. How we get the money to begin with. All the sources of revenue. Now, are there any questions about a particular department? Or anything of that sort? There being none? All in favor, signify by raising your card now. And opposed? The article carries.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I make a motion to reconsider Article 3.
Second. All right, Article 3. The budget has been reconsidered and second. Let me go over that quickly. To reconsider, if you vote in favor of reconsideration, what you're doing is nullifying the vote you just took, and we start all over again with the discussion. If you vote no for reconsideration, then the last vote counts as is, and this cannot be brought up again this evening for any type of discussion. So all in favor of reconsideration? Hands up, cards up, please. And opposed to reconsideration? Thank you. It's been reconsidered, and the budget will not be spoken of again this evening. Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Moderator, Article 4. I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer and town collector to enter into a compensating balance agreement with a banking institution for fiscal year 2021 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53F of Mass. General Laws.
Second. Article 4 simply gives town officials the right to put your money in an interest-bearing account. Any questions, comments? There being none? All in favor? Cards up, please. And opposed? The article carries.
Mr. Moderator, Article 5. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,800. Said some to be expended for social services in accordance with programs as approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Second. This is Article 5. This should look familiar to all of you. It's the same article that's in town meeting every year. This just simply allows the annual standard contribution to our local social services. There being any questions or comments? If not, seeing none, all in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you. The article carries. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000. Said some to be expended as the Town of Clinton's share to the Wachusett Health Education Action Team, WEET, Incorporated, which committee is a delegate agency of the United Way of Tri-County.
Second. Article 6 is simply our annual assessment to WEET. Any questions, comments, discussion? Being none? All in favor? Cards up, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article carries. Article 7.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws to set the limits on the total amounts that may be expended from each of the town's revolving funds established under the town's administrative bylaws. Mr. Moderator, I move the rest of the article as written in the warrant.
Second. As you can see from your warrant, it just, again, sets limits on the amount of money that various groups can take out of their own revolving accounts. And you see them listed there and the amount of money. Questions, comments, discussion? Being none? All in favor? Aye. Cards up, rather. Opposed? Thank you. The article carries. Article 8.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the assessor's overlay reserve account the sum of $30,000. Said some to be used to continue the senior tax rebate program for fiscal year 2021.
Second. This is Article 8. It puts money aside so that our senior citizens can volunteer in various departments, and it comes off their taxes. I believe maybe a year ago it was increased so more people could take part in this program. Any questions, comments, or discussion? There being none? All in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you very much. Article passes. Nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $34,640. Said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the following unpaid bill: Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association,
Second. This is an unpaid bill. It will take a little bit higher threshold to vote. Four fifths? Any discussion? If not, all in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 to the Health Insurance Trust Fund.
Second. This is Article 10. It's simply taking money that's already in the town coffers, free cash, and putting it in another account, the Health Insurance Trust Fund. Any discussion? There being none? All in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Article 11?
Yep. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from certified free cash the sum of $100,000 to the Stabilization Fund.
Second. Again, Article 11, same thing. It's money already in the town account. All right, taking it other free cash but putting it in stabilization instead. Any questions or discussion? There being none? All in favor? And opposed? Thank you. Article passes. Article 12.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sum of $1,500,000 to the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvements Stabilization Fund.
Second. All right, this article, remember, represents retained earnings. It's money that comes out of one fund and goes into a special fund to make improvements in our streets and in our infrastructure. Any questions or comments? There being none? All in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article passes. We're on Article 13, Bill.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund the sum of $175,000. Said some to be used for the support of cable access-related services, programming, and equipment.
Second. Article 13 just takes money out of the cable TV account, which we all pay if we have cable, if money keeps going in there. And they want to take some out to buy better services, programming, and equipment. Any discussion? There being none? All in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you. The article passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Landfill Enterprise Fund Closure Reserve the sum of $4,200,000 to be used for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 landfill closure and self-medal pond dredging project and all related work.
Second. This takes money from the Landfill Enterprise Fund to begin part of the landfill project, which is the dredging of that body of water that is to the left of the old Dunkinson's Grove, which has been polluted for a while and now needs to be dredged. That's part of the overall project. Again, it's money we have already moving to do something that we need to do anyway, dredging that area. Any discussion or clarification by anyone? There being none? All in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you. The article passes. 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Capital Projects and Infrastructure Improvements Stabilization Fund the sum of $1,000,000. Said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for road resurfacing and infrastructure improvements as approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Second. Article 15. I don't know why we need road resurfacing. I mean, what the heck? Anyway, is there any discussion? Sorry for that. There being none? All in favor? Of Article 15 and opposed? Thank you. The article passes. 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow through the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of $250,000. Said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for water system improvement projects.
Second. So this is Article 16. It's really kind of the same issue as the last one. We're appropriating money from one fund in order to pay for water system improvement projects. Is there any discussion? There being none? All in favor? Raise your cards, please, and opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Number 17.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the appropriation authorization under Article 25 from the 2019 Annual Town Meeting to allow these funds to be used for water and sewer system improvements and equipment in addition to exterior painting and installation of a disinfection byproduct removal system at the Burditt Hill Tank and interior/exterior painting and installation of mixing valve system at the Mulberry Water Tank.
Second. So this reauthorizes money that was borrowed in the past. There's some left over. And you folks gave the town permission to use the money for certain things. And now that those certain things have been expanded, as what Mr. Conley just said, a few other things. And that's why it has to be brought up back to you. And it's still working on water system improvements. I'm going to need a two-thirds vote, however. Is there any discussion? There being none? All in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you. The article passes. We're on 18, Bill.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the borrowing authorization to lease through the Rubbish Enterprise Fund as provided under Article 18 from the 2018 Annual Town Meeting for the purchase of a rubbish packer truck.
Second. All right, Article 18 is under discussion. They're fending the borrowing to do a leasing authorization instead. Is there any discussion, comments? If not, Article 18, all in favor? Aye and opposed? Cards up? Thank you. The article passes. Article 19.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $180,000. Said some to be expended by the Department of Facility and Grounds for replacement of the splash pad at Philbin Memorial Park and all related work.
Second. All right, this is a borrowing article. It's going to take two thirds. I'm sure many of you and your families enjoy the splash park up on the acre. And as you know right now, it can't be used. And this is to borrow the money to do a new splash park. I do have some information here if anybody wanted to see a picture of it. I believe it was online or maybe in the newspapers already. So I will need a two-thirds vote to get that splash park going all over again. Is there any discussion, comments? There being none? All in favor? Cards up and opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer certified free cash in the sum of $62,500. Said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds for re-roofing of the fieldhouse at Veterans Athletic Field and for the repair and/or replacement of water fountains in the Clinton Public Schools, including all related work.
Second. All right, Article 20. We'll take money from free cash to pay for a new roof on the fieldhouse at Veterans Field. That's the field across from Clinton High School. And also to repair or replace water fountains. And I do believe most Clintonsians need a translation of that. We're talking about bubblers. That's what we call them, I think. I taught for 30 years, and not once did a kid ever come up to me and say, "I'm thirsty, Mr. Ngano. Can I go to the water fountain?" No, never, ever said that. It's bubblers. All right, any questions, comments on that? New roof and work on the bubblers. There being none? All in favor? All in favor? And opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Article 21.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $100,000, said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds for the repair and construction, to relocate offices at Town Hall, and the purchase and installation of a new phone system for said building, including all related work.
Second.
Article 21, again, is a borrowing article. I need a two-thirds vote. There's going to be moving some offices around here in the Town Hall and also purchase of a new phone system for the Town Hall. Any questions, comments, or discussion? There being none. All in favor? Raise your card, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article passes. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from fiscal year 2020 road department wages the sum of $7,200, and appropriate from fiscal year Water Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of $22,100, and appropriate from fiscal year 2020 Rubbish Enterprise Fund the sum of $5,000, and appropriate from the Landfill Enterprise Fund the sum of $5,000, said sums to be expended by the Department of Public Works to fund retroactive wages as part of a negotiated agreement between the Town of Clinton through the Board of Selectmen and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council Number 93 for the period July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, having been negotiated in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 150E as amended.
Second.
All right, as the chairman said, it represents a union contract for DPW employees and retroactive wages from July 1 of last year. Any questions or comments? There being none. All in favor? Raise your card, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article carries. Number 23.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from fiscal year 2020 Facilities and Grounds wages the sum of $53,189, said some to be expended by the Department of Facilities and Grounds to fund retroactive wages as part of a negotiated agreement between the Town of Clinton through the Board of Selectmen and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council Number 93 for the period July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, having been negotiated in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 150E as amended.
Second.
Article 23 again represents a different union contract. This is the Facilities Department, retroactive raises from July 1 of last year. Questions, comments? There being none. All in favor? Cards up, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article carries. Next one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to borrow the sum of $110,400 and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen according to Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 8C to expend said sum for the acquisition and project costs associated with acquiring for a shared-use path by negotiated purchase or otherwise. A certain property consisting of four parcels of land, approximately 11.04 acres, or about 480,800 square feet of land, as described in the Railroad Valuation Maps as, and I move the rest of the article as written in the warrant.
Second.
All right, this is a borrowing article, but borrowing contingent on a grant. Questions, comments? I know someone. Where are you? Please state your name and address.
I'm Franny Hodge, 16 Harbor Street. I'd like to encourage you to vote in favor of this article. I want to make sure that everyone understands that this expense will not go forward unless the grant funding is in place to reimburse the town. So there should be a very limited or no expense to the town. There potentially could be a slight expense if the town has to borrow the money, and there's an interest fee. But other than that, all the money is covered by the grants with the Clinton Greenway Conservation Trust providing the matching funds. If you need more information on the rail trail, we'd be happy to share tons of detail related to that, but it's simply something that would be funded by grants, so we're asking for approval to upfront the money that would then be reimbursed to the town.
Thank you. This is, we're on Article 24. Any other questions or discussion? Again, it's asking to front the money for the purchase of four parcels of railroad property. I believe it includes the tunnel, the railroad tunnel off Route 70 and following the old tracks sort of behind Berlin Street, all the way along. Ultimately, it would be like the rail trail. Again, the money, you need to approve it at a two-thirds vote, but, you know, it's not that the town will run out and buy these. It's contingent upon getting a grant. If we don't get a grant, the town will not buy the property. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Raise your card, please. And opposed? Thank you. The article carries. Article 25.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend its general bylaws to change all references to the Board of Selectmen to Select Board and all references to individual selectmen to Select Board Member. Such bylaw change to take effect upon the enactment of the legislation in Article 27.
Second.
All right, this is a change to the bylaws. It's wording, dealing with select persons, selectmen, and I believe Selectman Carrigan wants to speak about this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sponsoring this one, so I want to give you some background. Nearly 100 towns across the state have made this change, and in January, our state Association of Selectmen made the same change. Select Boards have a proud history in the state. It's the first former representative government in America, and this vote will not change that history. Firefighters and police officers are no less brave than they were when they were firemen and policemen. The fact remains that this history goes back to the early 1600s, though, when women had no representation. And as we've learned in recent weeks, when it comes to equality, language really matters. Opponents are going to cite political correctness or say that two members of the board, Kathy Sheridan and Mary Rose Dickout, were women who had no problem with the term Board of Selectmen. What they might not point out is that in 170 years, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ngano, those are the only two female Select Board Members.
I think you're right.
The fact is, all too often, the faces up here don't look like the faces out there. So if there's anything we can do to remove a barrier to participation in local government where the real are perceived, I think we have the obligation to do so. The board has changed in the past. We've gone from three members to five. We've got a town administrator to better serve you. I urge you to make this change, too. Put Clinton on the right side of history. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I've been told an awful lot, especially lately, that I need to shut up and listen. That never worked well in the past, and it's not going to work for me tonight. I'm just your typical old fat white guy, and I've been made aware of my ignorance lately. I didn't know what a Karen is. I didn't know what woke meant, and I sincerely apologize for not being aware of the meaning and significant of Juneteenth. All that being said, I object to the intent of this article. We have serious issues that need to be addressed in our country. This article isn't one of them. Neither are Elmer Fudd, Gone With The Wind, Live Cops, Christopher Columbus, or George Washington. In this new, excuse me, in this new woke, politically correct, butthurt world, there is something for everyone to be offended by. Board of Selectmen, how about mankind? How about the human race? How about the word man in the word woman? Do we really need to change all that just to prove how woke we are? Please don't be a Karen. Please vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Is there any other discussion, maybe from the floor, on this? I don't know if that was a comment, but you need to say it up here, so. Is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
John Woodsmalle, 17 James Street. This isn't really a big deal. I don't get why you get butthurt about it.
Any other thoughts, discussions, questions? Yes.
Hello, Laura Garrity, 113 Clark Street. I have been in Clinton since 2007. It's one of the most amazing places I've ever been in. I grew up in a city, never had the privilege of attending a Town Hall until a Town Hall meeting until I came here, and it's one of the most exciting things that can be done. It's disheartening every year, except for this one, when we fail to make quorum. And I think a big part of that is a lack of interest with our young people. And maybe it seems a bit blasé, a bit unimportant between selectmen and select person, but if we can do anything, as Representative Carrigan said, to raise excitement, raise awareness with our young people, I think we ought to. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, talking about, still talking about Article 25? All right, there being none.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry I missed you.
Hi, I'm Ian Murray of 19 Schlaestreet, and I guess my only, well, I have a lot of concerns here, but this is the first meeting I've ever been to where a selectman or counselor or whatever bragged about being ignorant. So I'm a little, I'm a loss for words. I don't know who's going to be hurt by making this change. I think the speech he made is longer than what we'd actually be actually spending on this right now. So I don't know how it's hurting the rest of the world or the rest of the agenda or how this even relates anything he just said. But if we can represent more people in this town, why not? It's not going to hurt me as a man. I don't think it'll hurt many men in here. It won't hurt them. But it'll help a lot of people, maybe, to get involved in politics that aren't involved now. So I'd recommend that we change the name. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Finally getting some comments. Is that, okay. There being none. It's time to vote. All right? All those in favor of Article 25, which is to change the, you know, change the bylaw to reflect Select Board or whatever, please signify by raising your card now. And opposed? No, the article passes. We're going to go right to Article 27, all right? Only because 27 is related to 25, and rather than take them in order, we're just, we'll just go back one. So we're going to take a quick look at Article 27, which deals with what you just did. All right? And this, well, can you?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Mass. General Court to enact legislation to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board and the title of Selectmen to Select Board Member, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve amendments to said act before its enactment by the General Court that are within the scope and the general objectives of the petition.
Second.
All right, this just, you just approved it locally, and now Article 27 requires the Board to go forward to the Massachusetts Legislature to do what they have to do there as well. Any other discussion? Some ways, I think we discussed it, but any discussion on 27? If not, all in favor? Cards up, please. And opposed? All right, thank you. The article passes. We're going back to 26 now.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the administrative bylaws by eliminating the numerical requirement of a quorum to conduct any legal town meeting.
Second.
This is much-talked-about article, which is, reduces the, actually eliminates the quorum. And I can't speak of it, but I'm sure there are others who wish to do so.
Mariah Hunt-Laguerre, 4 Walden Terrace. Mr. Moderator, we are in extraordinary times right now, as evident by the lack of quorum that we had voted on tonight and all of the things that have happened. Our meeting this time being pushed back a week, the extraordinary measures that have been put in place to rearrange this room, clean this room, all for good reasons. However, we know that there are many people that because of the health of themselves or the concerns from health of others that cannot make or would not make this meeting tonight. It is for this reason, as well as many others, that I would like to table this particular article and discuss it at a time when our quorum has been restored and there are more people available to discuss, no matter what side of the issue that you're on.
All right, thank you. So the article, the article is, the motion, excuse me, not the article. There's a motion to table this article, which of course means we set it aside for some other time. In my, and there was a second? I'm sorry, that's right. So it's been moved and seconded to table this article. This, excuse me, this motion, getting hot up here. So that is not a debatable motion. So in other words, we're not going to call people up here to say, yes, we should table it, or no, why we shouldn't table this. It's obviously up to you, but it goes right to a vote. So if you are in favor, we won't call for a vote yet, but if you are in favor of tabling it, Article 26 goes away, and I imagine it will come back at the next town meeting or something like that. If you vote no, it means you want to talk about it, and we will discuss it and open it up to raise it or lower it or whatever you want to do. So all those in favor of tabling Article 26 on the quorum, to put it aside for some other time, raise your card now, please. And opposed? No, the article carries. So it has been tabled. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to reconsider this article. Vote to reconsider, please.
All right. Is there a second on reconsideration? Second, okay. So this is being reconsidered? So that means, again, if you vote yes to reconsider what we just voted on, we start all over again and we start a discussion. If you vote no, it cannot be brought up again at this meeting tonight. So all those in favor of reconsideration, setting aside the last vote and starting all over again, raise your card now. And opposed to reconsideration? Thank you. It is defeated, and it will not be spoken of again this evening. We are on Article 28, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the filing of special legislation to allow the Board of Selectmen to issue six additional Chapter 138, Section 12, all alcohol-pouring liquor licenses for the Town of Clinton, notwithstanding the limitation on the number of such license which may be granted.
Second.
All right, this article authorizes the Board to ask for six more liquor licenses in order to support business development, restaurants who may want to come into town, something like that. I will, in my notes, mention that we are currently two over the limit. So you're not really going to get six anyway. At the most, the state would give you four, because we're two over now. But perhaps somebody behind me would like to speak on this.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, we are currently, for whatever reason, notified that we are two liquor licenses over what's authorized. So if those businesses, any business, any alcohol-pouring business, that if it were to close, we could not transfer that license to a new entity. They would go away. There's also a liquor license that is restricted to a specific location because it was sought by special legislation. And when the law was passed, it authorized the liquor license, but it has to stay at one specific location, something entirely different than all the other liquor licenses in town. So if this article were to be approved, it would basically fully legitimize those three licenses and give to the Town of Clinton through its Board of Selectmen the opportunity to issue three other licenses to, for the purposes of economic development and stimulating the economy in Clinton. It would, they would not be issued for just your local neighborhood bar. The intent is to use these to help encourage a strong business to locate in the town.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Are there any discussion? Yes.
Sorry, I used to be quicker. Mariah Hunt-Laguerre, 4 Walden Terrace. I'm going to repeat what I actually said for the last article. I would like to table this article. I'm sure there are lots of good reasons why it should pass, but again, I feel very strongly that without our normal town meeting happening, and hopefully that will happen next year, that this is not something we should be discussing tonight. Thank you. I'd like to, motion to table.
Okay, I think you should have done that before we started talking about it. Yes. Head count. We'll have to ask Holly. I have no idea. I counted roughly 100 here on the floor. Now the 30 up top. You talking about how many people came tonight? Yeah. I'm going to guess about 130, but Holly has that information. Now, I'm not going to entertain that motion, Mariah, and I'm sorry, but I think we should have done that right away. No talking about it. You want to table it. We already kind of started about business development. We're down two already. Well, let's get our answers first here. Well, let's get our answers first here. 188? Wow. With that number, 188, and normally it's supposed to be 200, and we're lucky if we get 200. Most of you have been here in the past, wait an hour, 45 minutes. So, yes, I will go back to that motion. Is there a second to table? Second, okay. So, a motion has been made and seconded to table this article about, I'm sorry, this is the one on the, I'll be all right, on the...
Liquor license.
Liquor license, thank you. So, if you vote yes, once again, we are, we'll just set it aside, and it'll have to be voted some other time. If you vote no, it means you want to talk about it, and you want to discuss it, and you want to act on it. All right? So Article 28, about asking for six, knowing it's four, whatever, tabled. Please, those in favor of tabling this article till some other time in the future, raise your card now. And opposed. All right, that fails, the, that motion fails. So we're back to discussing this article. Any, yes. Name an address, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Teresa Hisman, and I'm from Water Street here in Clinton. There's a lot of problems with this. Number one, I don't know enough information about it, because I just read about this three days ago. I'm a local bar owner here in town. I have been closed for a long time. My business is in jeopardy of probably not opening back up. As well as that, there are already two liquor licenses in this town that have been up for sale for over two years. Why possibly would we be bringing in this? Also, at this time, shouldn't we be helping our local restaurants and businesses come up and get better before we start making way for new liquor licenses and new restaurants? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, could I add a couple more comments? One thing, and the speaker just brought it up, we currently have two liquor licenses that are from closed establishments that are just being held in a pocket by the previous owner for financial purposes. And the problem the Board of Selectmen have is normally, we could, after a year of the liquor license being closed, we could call that license back in and reissue it to another opportunity. We can't do that, because if we call them in, they're the two that were over quota, and they will immediately evaporate. And our obligation of the Board of Selectmen, in my view, is to encourage the opportunity for services to be provided to all the taxpayers of Clinton, not to artificially reduce competition, but to allow anyone that has a viable business plan to operate in the Town of Clinton. So that's sort of some of the more reasons why we've sponsored this article.
You want to come back? Okay, I've owned this bar here in town for three years, and I was forced to buy this liquor license. If they are now capable of giving out a liquor license for what, a nominal fee of, let's say, any idea? Again, we have no idea what they're going to charge for it, who's going to get it. As far as I know, the law in this town in Massachusetts is, once a liquor license is gone, it's not able to come back to the town. Therefore, if a liquor license is not used in one year, it shouldn't be out there. So there should be no two licenses sitting. Also, again, there are two bars in this town that have been trying to sell, so if they're going to give them away for, say, $5,000, that just shut them down, and again, I now have nothing, because they're giving them away practically.
Thank you. Any other, you're next.
John Woodsmall, 17 James Street. How many people like to use Lyft or Uber? How many people like to use Lyft or Uber? This is the same thing. Taxi medallions have been made obsolete by Lyft and Uber. It's an artificial cap on competition by the government. There's been talk in the state legislature about doing away with numerical limits for cities and towns for this very reason. Artificially holding down the number of new businesses that could open in town is not a good thing. It's unfortunate for those who have current licenses, but we have to look to the future. And economic development is oftentimes driven by new restaurants, new establishments, and limiting the number of liquor licenses artificially does nobody any good.
Motion to move the article. That means we stop discussion and we vote. So first, we have to, what? Thank you. So we want to move, basically move the question, so we need to vote on that. If you vote yes, we vote yes, we stop all discussion of it, and we vote. If you vote no, you want to talk about it some more, all right? All those in favor of moving the question, cards up. And those opposed, that motion carries, so it's time to vote. So now we're on, not the, not that motion, but the article itself, Article 28. All those in favor of Article 28, please raise your card now. And opposed, the article carries. Thank you. Article 29.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the filing of special legislation to amend Chapter 375 of the Acts of 1945 to authorize the Parks and Recreation Commission to act as the Fuller Field Commission as provided under said statute.
Second. All right. Parks and Recreation Commission would hereafter serve as the, or act as, the Fuller Field Commission. Any comments, discussion? We're on Article 29.
John Merriman, 124 John Street, former member of the Fuller Field Commission. I'd like to make a motion to table this article, so the Selectmen, the Fuller Field, former Fuller Field Commission and the Parks and Rec can get together and iron out some differences. Can I have a second on that?
All right, you want to table. All right, thank you. All right, the motion on the floor is to table this article. John gave the reasons to give some time for Fuller Field and Parks and Rec and Board of Selectmen to get together. So with that, again, it's tabling, so there's no real discussion. It's time to vote. If you are in favor of tabling, we put that aside for the evening, we don't bring it up again. If you are opposed to it, it's back on the floor and we talk about it. So, all those in favor of tabling Article 29 to some other time, cards up. And those opposed. That's, that's a, that's a close one. I think I need my counters, all right? We do have some counters here. You're going to do this side over, right? This side, yep, that side over, and you're going to do it from here over, right? So let's try this again. Those in, where was I? Those in favor of tabling this, please raise your hand and keep it up until you're counted. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. You're in favor of tabling. 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19. All right. 19.
Terry?
What'd you get? 26. And votes here? One here. One. Oh, thank you. It was my last counter.
It's tabled.
No, they're moving it. It'll get, it'll get. Be ready to count some more. All right, all those opposed to tabling this article, raise your card now.
Terry?
19? Oh, 11, I'm sorry. I got a slow counter. Tabling is two thirds anyway, right? Tableting is two thirds anyway, right? Tableting is two thirds anyway, right? Tableting is two thirds anyway, right? Definitely. All right, the, the, I flunked math. No. Just give me a minute, please, I'm sorry. I forgot the calculator. This is fourth grade math. So, 60 opposed and 64 yes. Had to check with my lawyer friend back there. No, the article is defeated. It's 64 to 60. So, the article is tabled.
The article's a table.
I'm sorry. The article is tabled and will not be brought up again. All right, we're now on to Article 30.
No, wait a minute. Terry?
It wasn't tabled, so we had to vote.
It wasn't tabled. It wasn't tabled. You needed a two-thirds vote to table.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I knew I'd mess up tonight. The article, the article was not tabled, because it didn't hit the two-thirds vote, all right? So we're back to talking about it again.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Well, thanks for letting me talk. Fuller Field is a unique and special place. So are Central Park, Savage Field, and Veterans Field. It makes no sense to have a separate board for one special field. We have a Parks and Recreation Commission whose mission is to plan, schedule, and facilitate use of all our recreational needs and facilities outside of the school department. They have a full-time professional staff to achieve these goals. Let's look at the legacy. Over the past 10 years, Parks and Rec has planned and executed numerous improvements to Central Park and Savage Field. New sidewalks, rehabbing the historic fountain, new railings on the perimeter fence. At Savage Field, the new family-oriented pavilion, new parking, children's playground, and ice skating rink. Yes, the baseball diamond at Fuller Field is a jewel to be treasured. But what about the mold-infested fieldhouse? The unusable bathrooms? The deteriorated and unsafe equipment barn? How about permitting the illegal dumping and filling of an environmentally sensitive wetlands? Let's not forget the bleacher fiasco. When was the last football game played at that facility? Have you seen the condition of that field? It's not just a historic baseball diamond. Let's move forward into the future. Parks and Rec has the professional staff, the proven experience, and vision to utilize Fuller Field to its fullest potential. Let's make the field available to the whole community. Please vote, join me in voting yes on this article. Thank you.
We're still under Article 29.
John Merriman, John Street. I think a lot of you people have a wrong impression about the Commission and everything that goes on down there. Other than the budget for the caretaker and the maintenance of the field, all the scheduling, all the work that's done down there is volunteer. Matt Colbus and his staff down there, all Little League and Babe Ruth volunteers, take care of that facility at no cost to the taxpayers. You're going to turn this over to someone, and you're going to, unlimited budget. The only money that's spent on Fuller Field is the grounds. We don't get any money for any of the buildings. That's why they're deteriorating down there. We need some help, and we weren't getting it from the Board up here. This is why we need you people to help us. Thank you.
As was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I was on the Board, I've been on the Board of Selectmen now for 15 years. And let me say, for 15 years, the Fuller Field Commission has submitted its budget in absentia. That is, they send us a paper with their budget, do not show up at the budget hear, have not shown up at the budget hearing, have not, never asked for any money. Well, I won't say never. There was some money asked four years back of the roof of the fieldhouse. But for the most part, have never asked for money for the fieldhouse, the bathrooms, anything but the field. It's submitted in paper, and nobody comes and asks. So when Mr. Merriman, whose work I do appreciate, says that they're never given any help, they never ask for any help. On the other hand, the Parks and Recreation Commission puts together a budget. They make an argument for what they need. They say, we need parking down at Dale Street, we need lights, we need this, we need that. They put together a budget, they go through the process, they get the money. I think Fuller Field will be better served by the Parks and Recreation Commission. I would like to point out that the Fuller Field is directly beside and behind the offices of the Parks and Recreation Commission. They will be able to keep a good eye on it. And they are a group who are answerable to the townspeople via election. The Fuller Field Commission is a volunteer group, and we appreciate our volunteers, but it's very difficult to get volunteers. If one is unhappy with what's going on with a volunteer organization, it's very hard to replace the volunteers, because very few people want to volunteer. We never have much of a shortage of people wanting to run for Parks and Rec. I think that if you care about Fuller Field and the future of Fuller Field, that transferring that responsibility to the professionals in field maintenance is the wise thing to do. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Rebecca Gray, 15 Ross Street. I just have a procedural and logistical question. So there are two line items in the budget. One is the Fuller Field Commission, and one is the Parks and Rec Department. If we vote yes on this, so that it becomes part of the Parks and Rec Department, do we now also need to vote on a warrant article about moving the money from the Fuller Field Commission over to the Parks and Rec Department?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, you may.
As an informational point, this, this article is seeking approval to seek legislative authorization for this. Something like that's going to take a year or two before it can be implemented.
I was formerly the chairman of the Fuller Field Commission for the last five or six years. Number one, I have submitted a budget which can be confirmed by both the Finance Committee and by Mr. Ward. What happened prior to me being... What happened prior to me being on the Fuller Field Commission, I'm not sure, but it sounds like we're kind of reflecting back a little further than, uh, recent years. Number two, uh, the last football game that was played down there was played by AYF last season, so you can ask any parents of any children that were down there, coaches included, what kind of condition that field was in. Last year, uh, the field was overrun by grubs. Once it was taken over by the Facilities Department, there was a broken irrigation head, and it took me to go to the Selectmen to have them step in and get everything resolved. When the Facilities Department came into place, there was no transmission, uh, no transition plan that was provided to the Fuller Field Commission or Parks and Recreation. Recently, the, um, Selectmen appointed the Parks and Recreation to the Fuller Field Commission Board. So they've essentially replaced the five people that were volunteering. Four seats technically, because one seat was unfilled for several years, which was also unanswered by, um, both the Selectmen and Mr. Ward. So, you've gone through the process of replacing Fuller Field. Why don't we see what takes place over this next year? And if the process goes great, then we can look at rewriting legislation. But if the process doesn't go that well, then we also have, we have a, a second choice or a second option of looking into it.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions, comments? If not, yes.
John Woodsmall, seventeen James Street. And I apologize for talking more, but this has been a pet peeve of mine for a number of years. Part of the... A theme of good government is making things streamlined and that there's people who are answerable for the good and the bad that happens by their actions. By virtue of the Fuller Field Commission being a group of volunteers, um, it, it's hard to hold... To hold them responsible or to... One of the things with volunteers is it's a thankless job. And when people become volunteers, they become very protective of their areas of responsibility. And that's not a bad thing, that, you need that type of passion. But that makes change very difficult. That makes modernization very difficult. And we've heard for a number of years of problems with Fuller Field, whether it was the bleachers or the rundown fieldhouse. Part of getting things changed is being advocates for the field, and that has not happened. When you have the platform of the Parks and Rec, which, no offense to those commissioners, is still, it's not a glamorous job, uh, but you're still elected, you're still held accountable by the voters each year. Uh, and it's become your responsibility to make sure that that field is maintained to the same standards as the rest of the properties that they control. So, I would say approve this change, approve this request, and if the Parks and Rec commissioners don't make improvements to Fuller Field, vote them out and put in candidates who say that they will.
Any other discussion? There being none, it's time...
Move the question?
Yes. We have another? Okay. I'm sorry, I missed him. We'll move the question after this speaker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Vattis. I live at one thirteen John Street. Uh, I just want to go back to Article twenty-five, the Board of Selectmen. Everybody here voted to have the Board of Selectmen to change from Board of Selectmen to Select Board for one reason, right? One of the big reasons is inclusion. Having more people step up into government or into voluntary roles for this town to better themselves. Now, if you vote no on this, you're taking away volunteers from the community and giving it to an organization. So, I just want to make a point here. It's going contrary to some of the beliefs of why we voted for Article twenty-five, is to have volunteers and have people from the community to give back. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. There is a motion to move the question. So once again, we're not, uh, it's not time to vote for this yet, it's time to vote on the motion to move the question. If we vote, if you are in favor of moving the question, there'll be no more discussion and it's time to vote. If it's defeated, it means you want to continue to discuss this. So all in favor of, uh, moving the question, which means it's time to vote? Hands up on moving the question and opposed. All right. Moving the question, um, has been approved, now it's time to vote. So we're looking at Article twenty-nine. I'm probably gonna need my counters again, and that means I'll need some math help again, probably. So, we're looking at Article twenty-nine as it's written right here in your warrant. Counters, please come forward. All those in favor of Article twenty-nine, please raise your card now, please.
Terry, will you get us two?
It's two-thirds. Oh, yes, holy shit. Want to do some math, Bob? I got you guys, okay. Twenty-three and... Okay, all right. And he's still counting. Oh, it is. Yes, it is, you're right. Thanks. I was thinking of moving it. I was thinking about moving it. And then be thirty-five. Okay. All right, again, now, all those opposed to Article twenty-nine, please raise your card. Please keep your hands up until you're counted. Yes, twenty. This is opposed. Thank you. We are so close. Eighty-one to sixty in favor, the article passes. Thank you. Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Mass General Court to enact legislation to continue the employment of Police Chief Mark Levenger and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve amendments to said act before its enactment by the General Court that are within the scope of the general objectives of the petition. Second?
All right. We're looking at a very, very simple situation. It's, uh, we, civil service says you have to retire at sixty-five. Chief Levenger, uh, does a great job, as we all know, and all this is doing is saying that if he wants to stay after age sixty-five, the town of Clinton is allowing him to do that. That's all it is. And I'm not gonna put words in Mark's mouth, I don't think he's going to stay till he's after sixty-five, but that's what it is. All right? We're not following civil service. You have the power to change that and say, "He can stay past sixty-five." Any discussions, questions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If I can explain the article?
Sure.
"Over the next few years, we all realize that the policy and training of police officers will be undergoing significant review and change. Why not give us the chance to utilize the experience and talent of the chief who has led this department so well for all these years? For, for those who say the mandatory retirement policy is about fitness, I challenge any of you to go for a run around town with the chief. My money's on him. I want Chief Levenger on your team to guide us through the upcoming changes. He is without question the man we need to make the Clinton Police Department the best it can be. He always has. Please vote yes for our town." Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions, comments, discussion? If not, all in favor of us overriding civil service? Yes? You had a comment, go ahead, come here.
John Woodsmall, seventeen James Street. Um, I'm continuing on my good government theme, or what I think is good government, I should say. I guess people can disagree with me. Legislation shouldn't be about one person. I, I have nothing, uh, everything I've seen about the chief is exemplary, and this is, my comments are not meant to be directed at him and his performance. I have no comments on that. What my commentary is, is that the state has had a longstanding retirement age of sixty-five. Just because we did something in the past doesn't mean you have to keep doing it. However, there are legitimate reasons why police and fire are subject to that mandatory retirement age. What I think this does is, I don't think this is good government to change the state legislation for one individual. It's, we, we know that he's, he's been chief for close to thirty years. We've all known that at sixty-five, he was gonna have to retire. To me, continuing this puts doubt into my mind as whether they think there are people within the current department who can move up and take his position. And I think it does a disservice to the rest of the police department that they don't have any opportunities for growth if we continue past sixty-five. Again, I'm trying to take the personalities out of it because good government should not be driven by personalities. Uh, so I realize this may be unpopular thought, and again, it's, has nothing to do with the performance of the chief, I have nothing but good things to say about that. I would just ask you to see past the personality and think about why we have to change this law for that reason. Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we were ready to go on that. All right, uh, it's time to vote. Talking about Article thirty and civil service, all those in favor of, uh, allowing this overriding civil service, raise your card now, please. And opposed. The article passes. Article thirty-one.
Tom Callanan, seventy-eight Wilson Street. It's in regards to the motion to table. I believe you mentioned that the table needed two-thirds majority?
The, the table did, yes.
All right, so I, I guess my question, I, I thought it was majority before that, going back to Article twenty-six, did we have that two-thirds for the, the tabling of the quorum?
Yes, we, yeah. Where are we?
Thirty-one.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the appropriation authorization under Article seventeen from the two thousand sixteen annual town meeting to allow these funds to be used for the design, purchase, and installation of a lighting system for the Little League field at Savage Field and to borrow the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to fund said project. Second?
All right, this is to, um, some of the money is already in the, the town coffers and the Parks and Rec, but they need an additional one hundred thousand dollars, this is a borrowing article, in order to put a new lighting system on the Little League field on Vale Street. Any questions, comments, discussions?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I know the Parks and, select members of the Parks and Rec Commission came to us, uh, earlier in the year talking about a project that would light the entire complex, and I was just curious why they pulled that back and if there are any plans to finish it, uh, for the softball players who actually play their games at night. Is anyone from Parks and Rec here can tell us why they didn't go forward with that plan?
Can we get an answer from Parks and Rec?
Hello? Rosa here at five thirty-seven High Street. The Parks and Rec Commission did not put this warrant in, I believe it was a citizen's. So...
Right, but we talked, we talked about a, a larger project.
The Parks and Rec Commission decided not to put a warrant in for lighting this year because we were asking for a splash pad, so...
Okay, all right, thank you. Matt, do you want to speak on this? Where's Matt? After him.
Matt Farakis, living Colonial Drive. I was the person who worked in conjunction and collaboration of Article thirty-two, which is a citizen's petition to consider the lighting down at Vale Street. For folks that don't know me, I'm also heavily involved in the Little League and the lights have been, you know, failing a little bit at a time for the last several years. Uh, it's been evaluated by structural engineers that they're not safe, uh, which could significantly impact the ability for the kids to play down there. Uh, when I brought the, the article for, uh, citizen's petition to the town, uh, in collaboration with them, it was suggested that this would be a way to solve for that without the taxpayers have to have the burden of, of, of full two, the full amount to actually fund that out of this year's budget. Since there is money left from two thousand sixteen, which was all procured funds from you, the taxpayers, to be spent down at Savage Field, the thought was to be able to add a warrant of a hundred thousand dollars to successfully support this article and support getting the lights done. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tumlow?
Jim Tumlow, Three Shore Lane. Member of your Finance Committee. Before the virus, uh, there was a lot more money available and there, when the petition came out and we knew it was gonna happen, we talked to Matt Cobus and some other people that were really involved in getting these lights done. We told them they'd have a better shot with the, with the stretch of the money to start with the Little League field, and that's why that number came out. Anybody that's been a coach in the Little League's been in that little room trying to get the lights going so they can play. So, this is something that's been going, that was fifteen years ago for me. So it's time to fix something that's broke. We've been able to put the money together and get it done. Tonight's the night we should vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? It's in my notes, I have that the cost of the, of the whole project is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but a lot of that money is already in, again, the town, town accounts with Parks and Rec. They need a hundred thousand to get it done. Any other discussion? There being none. All in favor of this article? Raise your card now and opposed. The article passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to table Article thirty-two. Second?
There's no need for Article thirty-two because we just funded it, you just funded it, and Article thirty-one. All in favor and opposed? That's it. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Moderator. Second?
It's a second. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it very much. You folks, we want you to go out that side. You folks, straight back.
And, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the first town meeting, in my experience, it started on time and finished this quickly. So thank you very much for your efforts. So thank you very much for your efforts.